Six o'clock, Monday, April seventeen, one point three, ready for the meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
You've joined me in the political weakness. Let me introduce to the by of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Who will be agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Three A, public hearing on the proposed contract documents and estimated costs for repair or improvement, Toby Park Phase One improvements motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Rochelle. Dustin, that's all to me. Uh, we, as you can see in the package, we received bids on the eleventh that came in considerably higher than what we thought, and there have been a couple of bid items that I'm sure why. So I give three options on this. Uh, I would recommend option three, reject the bids and do a bit later this year. I mean, it's all, um, construction and point four that. Any other questions? Is this something that's been happening a month? It is, um, pardon, not every project comes in it, it's been a give or take, not normally in here, but other places, some places will come in and some projects coming good, some projects coming high. Not sure what's going on. For this one, we only have one bidder and then I did find out two bidders dropped out last minute for some odd reason, so that's a couple of either. Just, um, on the, I didn't, so. There's the base bid and then the alternate, yes, what are the alternates? So the alternates A and B were just the parking areas. So I separated those out just in case, well, this context area was gonna happen where I thought maybe if the basic comes in. Good, you can do that, not have those other parking stalls kind of hold it up type of thing. That's why I did it that way, that way, the goal was really good, had scores in, our class could be happened later. So we just weren't, this whole thing came in high, we weren't holding everything up. And there's not any benefit. Posting again. Uh, probably not this time. Of the year, this time we get it back out, we're talking. Probably April, May, and then May, then it's gonna get in the morning of June, so then your other month, the contractors, we should, uh, not sure they'd be done by the end of the year. So waiting till maybe Septemberish to rebid it. Uh, because that's the best I could do, if you want to, contract, we're looking for that here though. Uh, what, what, so trying to pull something together also. Sometimes contractors come good, busy structure. Well, um. I don't, it seemed beneficial to try to get something done this year, I don't know, I think we'll be. I think, right? So I don't know if there, it would be appropriate, maybe see about trying something else, uh, you know, as far as facing goes, but. I mean. We've been talking about spending the money, uh, for, it's supposed to be two years ago, I think, or at least last year. So hopefully maybe we can visit at the next parks.
Yeah, we can do that too.
See, see, it's like something else to get done.
Right.
I prefer not to delay. Right.
So I agree with that.
Good this time, so we've started.
If you're more exploring, um. The bids for the parking to the east side of the park and the, uh, making it seem more accessible, you know, that desperately. Um, the ramp and the ground will leave with reasons to visit, should we consider trying to get a bid just on that portion?
We could, I guess it just depends upon funding for the whole thing, right, like. Spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on parks where it's. What if the.
Part of bigger.
Right, what if the tennis court came in two hundred thousand dollars higher? Are you willing to do the tennis court, not do the parking type of thing, you know what I mean, like, how do you spend that money, I guess, because I don't. That's far budget anyways.
Because there's not any extra.
Right, so that, that's why it's split about, so we get something done, I was hoping we get something done, not everything. And then we could have got everything, that's, I don't know, type of thing, so it's whether you want to spend the money on that, not have it up through the rest of it, I guess. Yep. If you're certain suggestions, I, I would. Hope this passed. Make it more accessible. If it was this revolution was called, nobody wants to come voting.
But they're not voting in the community center this year?
No.
No, they're not.
A church.
And that was about election officials and that.
So that. One moment. That's something we're gonna do, that's what's probably, I guess. All right, uh, any other questions?
So I guess I'm looking at this from the perspective of if we, so we have this, these dollars that are for our current FY twenty-three fiscal year. And then we budgeted some for FY one four as well, so we'll be bidding for both of those. Then.
How you, how it works is some of the work would happen after FY one. Just realized, so.
Oh, well, are you talking about like July one of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Yeah, well, right, so, but what I'm saying is is now we have essentially two fiscal years, so are we going to bid it that way?
I don't know what, what, what.
It wouldn't matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't matter, so we would just do a budget amendment for FY twenty-four if the project doesn't go, if we don't use the money, it's open for twenty-four, good deal.
Okay, sure, I understand that, that's a really good question, my question is, is how much? Can you get more art done?
I don't know.
Because you have more hours to go.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Sorry, yeah, um, great question, I don't have the budget in front of me, so I'm not exactly sure how much we budgeted for FY twenty-four for parks.
Okay, that won't need an answer, need a consideration, that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Forty second. Okay.
Hold on, just real quick question, so how many, you only got one bid in, how many did you let to, Eric, me too?
We don't give it to people that's on, that are on their plans, I think, um, there are ten or twelve plan holders. Yes. That we know of, there's other planners that take their plans and looks for else that we don't know who gets those, so there might be another five, six, seven, I'm not sure, so.
Would this be an indicator that everybody's busy?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Any public comment on this? Anybody online? Okay. Okay, well. So. Uh, three B, consideration of proposed contract documents, estimated cost to repair or improvement, whole part phase one.
Move to the night. The night.
The night event.
The night. Every time.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Item four, public forum, this is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business and others than those listed on the agenda. How action may be taken, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments, no more. Any online? Okay. Five, consider agenda. Okay. Roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Six A, consider approval of police department former police vehicles transfer to the Des Moines area community college criminal justice program for use, standing on going to this training.
Second.
Travis, do you have anything?
I got, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Who was the traffic?
Libby can.
Sorry. Michael Libby would.
Yeah.
Jesus, yes.
Travis, Senator Chief, Police Department. This proposal, you're all aware of the long process it took because of supply chain replacement vehicles for the existing vehicle fleet. And in the process, we could not trade in the existing vehicles. The two vehicles in question, one has is ten years old, the other is seven years old, both got well over a hundred thousand miles. And since they're police cars, those weren't easy highway miles. Um, so the, a request with DMAC, they're wanting police type vehicles for the training program, so the police are proposing. We give these vehicles, the city gives these vehicles to DMAC and get them off our rolls.
I know that this had been brought up, I think, prior to Chief Mufuski leaving, I reached out to council members individually with their thoughts on this. Um, from my perspective, I think it is a, I understand there could potentially be some value to these vehicles. Uh, but I think, uh, more importantly, it's an opportunity for us to. Partner or get, um, essentially good press from DMAC, to be honest with you, um, and I think that, uh, we're currently. Recruiting or getting, potentially getting our crew from DMAC as well.
With the fire department and the police department.
So I, I think it goes a long way, um, in donating these vehicles, and I would ask the council to approve. The donation of.
Chief, can I ask, uh, the new vehicles are in service?
Yes, as of Friday, both vehicles are in service now.
That was, I think, quicker than what we thought they were coming in, isn't it?
Actually, it's a little slower.
Kind of like.
I know, right?
Uh, but yes, they are in service and the, uh, the two vehicles in question are just sitting idle right now, waiting for a decision on transfer.
And if I read correctly, your note, we're able to salvage some of the internal equipment from the old?
Everything that could be moved from the old platform into the new was done, so. The old, there are a couple of things that can't simply because in ten years, even though it looks basically like the same vehicle, there have been body style changes and whatnot. So that stuff, like the internal cages, we left those behind, but all of the electronics and the expensive stuff. Uh, was moved into the new vehicles because they're still good.
Thank you.
Mayor, is there any value in, uh, asking me not to put donated by the city of Windsor Heights on, on a vehicle like the, uh, the whole drug seizure cars that the whole county's rolling around in?
Travis asked. If we do those, ask them.
But I'm sure they will give us any publicity we want because, you know, help their program, then it helps us as well, so.
And we also write in that every time we need an employee that they'll find perfect ones for us, fire department and police department, I mean, if we're asking.
We heard of DMAC's new last Friday and we've got another one in the process right now, so, um, that program is moving for us.
Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Six B, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three twenty-four, resolution and support of grow solar, twenty twenty-three group buy-in under heights. Okay, salute. Um, presentation or comment on this, Joe, or Joseph?
No, it's the same as we did last year, I worked about the last meeting, but basically this is us saying that we support our businesses and our citizens, uh, hearing about it and being a part of the group buy, we would like to be engaged in this year and.
Will they be having meetings?
Yeah, they'll do, like, the forums like we did last time.
But I missed the base.
They're not inside, no, they're not inside. We have to say what we want to do.
You're making sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
Other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harns.
Six C, city administrative recruitment discussion, Mark Peterson, Vice President of Gov HR. Mr. Peterson, are you on? Uh, I see your name.
I am here, if you can hear me okay.
We can hear you okay.
Excellent, well, thank you for inviting me to your meeting this evening, I'm, uh, looking forward to working with you on this very, very important recruitment. Activity, I know, uh, I, I enter the picture under a little unusual circumstance, but that's fine, I'm happy to, uh. Help you out and, and be a resource, uh, this actually, uh, brings me back to my old stomping grounds, I currently live in Illinois, but was born and raised in Iowa and spent. Uh, a number of years in the Des Moines area. In fact, I was telling Rochelle, we had a nice long conversation about a week ago that, uh, when my family moved, relocated to the Des Moines area, my father was transferred. Uh, they initially found a house in Windsor Heights, and I remember as a kid, I was, I think, fifth or sixth grade, looking it up on the map. Where it was, and unfortunately, that particular, uh, home fell through, and so we ended up in Ankeny, and I, we lived for a number of years in Ankeny, I graduated from Ankeny High School and, uh. And went for, uh, actually two years to Des Moines area community college before moving on to Iowa City and University of Iowa. But I know the Des Moines area well, I love it, I've got, uh, some close family members that live in Clive and I visit them. Oh, every year or so, and I'm always amazed at the changes when I go back, uh, how much things are changing in, uh, the Des Moines area, and it's certainly a very exciting place, and, uh, again, I'm. Familiar with Windsor Heights, beautiful community and delighted to, uh, be part of this process. Uh, if I could just to give you a little background information and then, uh, we'll, we'll talk about some specific, uh, elements of the recruitment process. Uh, but I, uh, I came to, uh, to Gov HR about six years ago, I've been in, uh, local government management for over thirty-five years. Uh, actually, uh, was in, uh, managed a couple of, uh, short stays in Iowa and Oralville and Ankeny. And then spent about five years in the Kansas City, Missouri area before coming to, uh, Normal, Illinois, uh, located in the center part of Illinois where I was there for thirty years. Ten as the assistant and twenty as the city manager, uh, Normal's a town of about fifty-five thousand people right in the middle of the state. Uh, retired in twenty eighteen and a few months after that, uh, came to work with Gov HR and I have been with them ever since, and I do, uh. A lot of executive recruitment like this, I think I've recruited, uh, twenty plus, uh, city administrators and city managers, countless department heads and other, uh, local government executives. I've assisted councils with strategic planning and goal setting and staff development and a variety of other things, but certainly my bread and butter is, uh, is executive recruitment. And that's why I'm here, uh, with you today, I'm sure that it is not lost on any of you that we are in a very challenging recruiting environment. For any professional position in local government and certainly city administrator is no exception. Um, we're finding where five or six years ago, we would, uh, post a position similar to this and we'd have fifty to sixty applicants. Today, maybe twenty to thirty would be considered a good, uh, response, so we've seen certainly, uh, there's just not nearly. As many candidates out there for these positions, and in addition to the, uh, dilution of, uh, quantity, we've seen some. Uh, reduction in qual, overall quality as well, so it, it makes our job that much more important, and it's why I think cities look to recruiters to help. Uh, go out and seek out good qualified potential candidates from which you all can ultimately make a decision. And, uh, certainly we have our challenges, but the good news is there's lots to sell in your community. Uh, so I'm feeling good, optimistic, and I'm, uh, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, reach out through some hard work. The, the old days where you post, I call it post and pick, where you just put an ad up and wait till the applications come in and make a decision, those days are gone. So we have to roll our sleeves up and we have to get out and work our networks and call people and sell the community to potential. Applicants, good applicants, qualified applicants and encourage them to apply, and again, that's, that's. Probably the most important reason you hire a recruiter like me. Uh, I've actually already started, uh, making calls, uh, and, uh, I've, uh, talked to several, uh, potential candidates and have a, a list of. Of many more, I not only have a extensive network myself throughout particularly the Midwest, but we have twenty-two different, twenty-two recruiters at Gov HR and I've reached out to many of them. And asked them for names or contacts that I might reach out to as potential candidates, we also, of course, use. Heavily social media, and that's become a very important component of any good recruitment program, and we find, particularly with LinkedIn. But also Facebook and even Twitter, we find that we get a lot of good applicants through, uh, social media platforms as opposed to the more traditional. Uh, 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 trade publications and organizations, they're important as well. But we're having just to redouble our effort to go out and attract a good quality candidate, so, uh, but again, I, I'm excited about this job, I think it's a tremendous. Opportunity for a professional who is looking to maybe move into a metropolitan area like Des Moines, which is a very exciting. Um, you know, you've got an economy that's on fire there, lots of really wonderful amenities in the region, so I think in that regard, it's, uh, it's a very attractive opportunity and I'm, I'm anxious and. Excited about getting busy and marketing that for you. Um, so I'm gonna stop there and see if there's any initial, uh, initial questions or comments that you have for me. Uh, before we sort of get into the meat of the discussion and, uh, talk about some very specific elements related to the, uh, proposed recruitment process.
Questions?
Mark, this is Michael Libby, uh, greetings and welcome.
Thank you.
I, I read your bio on the site, and I learned a lot about Normal, Illinois.
Yeah.
Familiar with that area, having immigrated from Illinois to Iowa enough years ago.
I see.
Um, so I, I've been a vice president of, and president of some major corporations, but I'm just curious, is, is this the only. Uh, city that you personally are working on, or do you have others that you work with as well?
I have, I have one other at this point in time, I just finished an engagement, usually, um. I'll, I'll kind of limit myself to three at one time, that's, uh, because I don't do this full-time, this is a, it's kind of a part-time commitment. Um, and that three is I consider about as much as I want to do, but right now, I have this community and one other, uh, uh, it's actually a city manager recruitment that's just starting in, uh, Illinois.
Uh, because I, I work in the private sector and not so much in the public sector, is it inappropriate for us to, uh, give preference to women or individuals of color in a search like this?
Certainly not, I mean, uh, we all are, uh, uh, I think more so than ever, we are aware of issues involving, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion. It's a hallmark of our company, uh, we are a female-owned company, uh, Gov HR. And, uh, it is a priority of our company to try to deliver diverse applicant pools to our clients. Uh, ultimately, it's your decision, uh, ultimately, you're gonna probably select the person who's best qualified, but if we're doing our job, we hope to give you some choices. That involve, uh, uh, differences in gender and, uh, racial and ethnic backgrounds.
A final, final question, I'm sorry that you're the guy asking all the questions, but.
No problem.
I'm curious, you, you may mention the fact that it's a challenging environment.
Yes.
Fine qualified candidates out there, what, what would be the contributing factor of that, Mark?
Well, I would say, uh, and, and a lot of this sort of, uh, uh, coincidentally occurred around COVID, but I think that's as much coincidence as anything. I think it's the baby boomer population, lots of people in these positions are retiring or have retired. Uh, I guess I'm kind of included in that, although I've been out now for over five years, but, um. There, we're just seeing fewer and fewer young people electing to pursue public service as a career. So the pipeline into the profession through graduate schools and so forth is not nearly as full as we would like it to be, so that has, uh. Has led to, uh, just fewer candidates to fill this growing number of positions that are occurring throughout the country. Um, the other thing that I will say is we're finding that, uh, younger people, particularly in that millennial age, are not necessarily interested in public service for a whole variety of reasons. And the other thing that I, that I have observed is that, um, people in professions are being careful where they go. If they're in a good situation, it's politically stable, they find that they're, they're being appreciated, they enjoy their work. Uh, it takes a lot to pull them out of that chair, uh, probably more so than ever, I think people are just being very careful of where they go, so. All of those factors has led us to having to be much more aggressive in our recruitment than used to be the case. And, uh, fortunately, I, I've, I've had some tough ones, but I've thus far, knock on wood, been successful, we've been able to find a good candidate, uh. In many cases, multiple good candidates for all the positions, uh, uh, which I have been fortunate enough to, to assist a council in recruiting. Um, and I feel that way here, although again, we'll have to work at it, and, uh, there's, there's lots of things to sell in Windsor Heights, that's the good news. Um, there's a, there's a few things that we'll have to overcome, a little bit of history that we'll have to deal with, which I'm sure we can. Uh, but I still remain optimistic that we can attract some really good quality candidates. Um, there are lots of people out there that appear to be well-qualified, their resumes look good. Um, fortunately, I've been around long enough, I know a lot of these people, uh, the frequent flyers, the usual suspects, and, um. If there's somebody that I don't feel that is equipped or capable or, uh, the right fit for. Your community, I certainly wouldn't recommend them, I do want to say at the outset, though, whatever we do, you're in charge, this is your process. Um, I'm going to be providing you my best advice and consult, um, and I'm not, I tend not to be shy, I will tell you what I think. Uh, but at the end of the day, you're making the decisions, you're the group that is accountable for the ultimate decision, not me. So whatever process we employ, it's one that it's important that you feel comfortable with the process. And, and again, ultimately, all of the decisions are yours, I'm here to provide, uh, advice and. Execution not only during the recruitment, but also to assist you in the screening and selection, uh, but I'm here to assist and it, it ultimately the buck stops with all of you.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Peterson, this is Lauren Campbell, um, we heard from the previous search firm that we use that, um. That we have some reputation issues that are keeping candidates away, so, um, it sounds like you're obviously willing to help us navigate some of those. Can you speak to, um, anything that the city can do to help be the most attractive for, um, a great candidate instead of? The, um, I'll just go stop the sentence there.
Well, great question, uh, uh, and what I will say is we are, we're in kind of a, a seller's market, and you're a buyer. We're trying to find a, a city administrator, and so what we'll have to do is when we do get those, we do get applications. We're gonna have to do, put our best foot forward, so to speak, and demonstrate to the applicants that this is a really good opportunity, it's a supportive council. Uh, you have a job to do, you, you have to hold the city administrator accountable, there's nothing wrong with that, but, uh. We are, we are supportive group, we have a, a great staff, and more importantly, we have a wonderful community, so we'll just work hard when the time comes. So we'll just work hard when the time comes to bring candidates to Windsor Heights to kick the tires and to meet all of you. We'll work, work hard to make sure that they leave with a very positive impression. My goal always is if we invite somebody to interview, I want to make darn sure that if they're selected, they say yes. And it doesn't always work that way, but that's our goal. So we want to leave them with a very positive impression. And when they leave Windsor Heights after that initial interview, they're thinking, boy, I sure hope I get this job. Um, so I think that that's the most important thing and we'll work together uh, in that process. But I, I don't, you know, there are some reputational issues, but many communities have those and they're still able to hire good people. We can overcome those. I don't think those are those I would consider to be insurmountable problems, but they're things that we'll just have to address. And I personally, when I reach out to candidates or they reach out to me, I'll be well-prepared to discuss those and try to give some background and encourage those applicants that may be sort of sitting on the fence to go ahead and submit an application and, and try and, and run them through the process.
What, what do you, yeah, what, what do you need next from us?
Okay. So, uh, I, I, I did, I put together a little kind of discussion outline, uh, just to kind of keep us focused and we don't, there's a lot on here. We're not going to get through everything tonight. We don't need to decide everything. I will say, uh, I, I spent quite a bit of time on the phone with Rochelle. She's been very, very helpful and she and I have been exchanging email messages, um, uh, back and forth the, the last several days, uh, which again, has been very helpful to me and I appreciate all of her, uh, responsive, uh, responsiveness to my questions. Um, I did send out a schedule, a draft schedule and I'm, and I'm very aware that the schedule is important. I recall when we first proposed on this uh, particular recruitment, that was emphasized in the, uh, request for proposals is that you wanted to move as quickly as possible. Uh, but still making sure that we're, uh, performing our due diligence and we're not, uh, missing some good candidates. So I'm, I'm assuming now unfortunately because of circumstances, you're, you're, you're four months in and still we don't quite see the light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, so what I've attempted to do with the schedule that I think Rochelle has distributed to you is to move this as quickly as possible. I have a, a draft position announcement that I'm hoping to post within the next day or two. And we'll talk about that a little bit. I'm, uh, in the final stages of buttoning up a, uh, recruitment brochure. I'll have that out to you soon. And again, I've already started making contacts and, uh, I've had a few unsolicited calls from potential applicants as well that have just heard that I'm involved and have reached out. Uh, but we'll start, uh, very quickly beating the bushes. I've condensed the application period down to three weeks, usually a month is the standard uh, in this, but I've kind of trying to move this along as quickly as possible. And also as I explained, and I think Rochelle passed this information along to you. What my plan is in this case is as good applicants can emerge is, is they are, we'll review the applications as they're submitted. If there's, if there's a candidate that looks particularly attractive, uh, in terms of their education experience and also based upon what you are looking for. If there's somebody that appears to be a really good fit, uh, I don't see the need to wait and continue to evaluate them until the end of the application period, which is, you know, I, again, I kind of three weeks, I think is sufficient. We can go ahead and begin that process now, just sort of to keep things moving so that we can get to a final decision as quickly as possible. Uh, so that's what I am suggesting. The other, the other thing, the other consideration is, as I said, there's a limited number of good quality applicants. And, uh, I don't want anybody else snatching up a good one that is a good fit for Windsor Heights before we have a chance to begin that screening process. So I think it behooves us to be nimble and flexible and try to move this along as quickly as possible so that we can again, just wrap up, uh, in an expeditious fashion, but also make sure we don't uh, lose a good candidate to another community that's maybe a little quicker than we are. Um, but the rest of the schedule is relatively self-explanatory. Um, and, and again, it, it, this is a little bit of an atypical. Usually we wait until there's like e-end of an application period, then we do all of the interviews. Well, it's very possible we might be interviewing somebody in two weeks. If, if they emerge as a, as a quality candidate and we do some due diligence upfront to make sure, yes, they're indeed quality. And we'll do our background checks and whatnot that are required. Um, but it may be necessary to move quickly with interviews and that doesn't mean you have to make a decision right away. But at least you've gotten that part of it done. And then as other candidates emerge that are attractive, we can do the same with them. Uh, but I think the goal is to try to get this wrapped up in about thirty days from when we post. And that means we have to, we have to be again, uh, uh, nimble and agile and flexible in order to get that done. Because I know you, the position's been open or vacant for a long time. I, Rochelle appears to be doing a great job as an interim and and, uh, she made it clear to me she was not a candidate. Uh, but, uh, I'm sure you'd like to get the, the, the new administrator onboard as soon as possible. So that's a quick overview of the schedule. If you see any red flags there, any concerns, just, you know, that again, it's, it's your process, not mine. I'm just trying to suggest a, uh, an approach that I think hopefully will, will, will expedite this process a bit. Any questions or concerns about that schedule and that process?
I like how the process is. I like how it looks, the schedule looks. I like that we're trying to get ahead of people of other cities. Um, possibly picking up anybody that might be a great fit for here. Um, just because we're waiting for some time. Um, so I think this looks good.
Yeah, we don't want to wait just for an artificial deadline just to begin the process and, and that's, yeah, I agree with you. I think that's important. I know that you spent a lot of time, I, I believe you did, with the previous recruiter talking about uh, what you want to see in the new administrator, what particular skills, experiences, attribute, personal attributes you'd like to see. I've got all that information. I'm assuming that's still valid. Ordinarily, we would do a lot at this meeting, but I, I hate to rehash that ground if from what I've been able to get from Rochelle is, is the information. If that remains valid, and I assume it does, because that is, that's really important. I mean, when you, I use the analogy, when you go out to buy a new car, usually I have kind of an idea what you're looking for. You know, do you want an SUV? Do you want a sports car? Do you want a pickup truck? You, you know, uh, what do you want? Well, that's part of this exercise is to let, let me know, which you have done already, assuming it's still valid. Is that what is it that we were looking for in this new administrator? What are the most important skills? What are the most important personal attributes? And, um, and I, if that is still valid from what I gleaned from the past recruitment, then we'll, we'll move forward with that. If you think there needs to be more discussion, I'm happy to make myself available to have those conversations, not only with you all, but with your senior staff, if you'd like them involved and with any other community stakeholders to begin to shape the, the, I, I would say the profile of the ideal candidate for your city administrator. But if it's, if what you've given, what you've done already is still valid, we'll just go with that.
Well, I, I think that everyone here is looking for the, the same thing most likely. I don't know in what form it was transcribed to you or the quality of said form. So we got, where, where did you get it?
Well, if you look, if you look at the recruitment brochure done by the, uh, previous recruiter, there was laid out in pretty good detail in that document. Here's what we're looking for. We want, you know, somebody with strong leadership skills. We want a collaborator, a communicator. I don't have all of it in front of me, but um, it was fairly well documented what particular skills that you felt were important. You were looking for somebody with at least five years of experience, which I think is reasonable. At least a bachelor's degree and preferably a master's, but not required. Um, and those are the kinds of things that, um, that helps me to, to, when I go out and start looking for candidates, when I find one that seems to be a good match for all those things, then we know maybe we, we've got a good one. That's a good fit. There may be somebody who's really experienced and very capable, but just doesn't match your profile. Doesn't really have what you're looking for. Well, that's, I, that's not one that I'm going to pursue very actively because that's not what you said you wanted. Is that fair enough?
Yes, thank you.
I would like to talk to you a little bit about the salary range and I may have, I, I've shared some of this with Rochelle and I think she may have passed along to you. Um, again, we're in, we're in a, a seller's market. And salary is important, always has been important, maybe more important than ever. Particularly for the candidates that I would consider to be top tier, the really good qualified candidate. So we just, we have a, you all have a fiduciary responsibility to your taxpayers to be reasonable. Uh, and I get that and I completely support that. Um, and, and I think the range that you had previously advertised, one-twenty to one-fifty isn't, isn't a horrible range. If I have concern, I shared with Rochelle and I think she may have passed along, I have some concern at the bottom end of the range. That's a pretty broad range, a thirty thousand dollar range for a starting salary range. I would propose or recommend that you bump that bottom end up to maybe one-thirty-five. That still allows you to maybe get a little bit of a diamond in the rough. If, for example, if we were able to attract a, a very capable person who's not been a city administrator, maybe they were an assistant or a department head, but they see, certainly we believe have the capability. They're going to be a little cheaper. Uh, as opposed to somebody who's a journeyman city administrator, somebody who's been in the role for ten or fifteen years, been there, done that, uh, brings lots of, kind of checks all your boxes. Then you're looking at somebody at that top end of the range. And I think at that one-fifty, I think that's a, a pretty competitive number. Uh, all recruiters would like a higher, but I, I think we can recruit at the one-fifty. I'm a little worried if we use a range of one-twenty to one-fifty, that might tend to scare off a few potential applicants. It's generally, some applicants assume that, well, that councils are going to try to hire towards the bottom of the range. And there's a little truth to that. Um, I would say that if we, if we find applicants that seem to match what you're looking for in terms of skills, let's say they've got really good experience. They've been in a community in a large urban area. They seem to just fit perfectly. You're looking at the top of the range for a candidate of that capability because they have lots of choices out there. They've got lots of places they could go and, uh, we're seeing cities are dialing up compensation packages. In some cases, even beyond what I think is maybe reasonable, but that's the fact. They're, they're dialing up those packages and not just for, uh, administrators, but for department heads as well in order to compete and try to attract the highest level of talent. So that's the dynamic that's going on in this environment. Ultimately, this is your call. I mean, it's your money, you're representing the taxpayers. But I think if we bump up that bottom range, I think it will help us a little bit. I would, I'm okay keeping the top end at one-fifty. I think that's competitive. Any thoughts or questions?
So the ask is simply what, based upon market?
Based upon market, yes. Based upon market conditions right now, uh, I think, I think that bottom end, it would be helpful to bump it up. Yes.
And I mean, market's fine, but you're talking about a city of five thousand people.
Yep. I, I understand and you're in a metro area which pushes salaries up a little bit in terms of, you know, what you're, the market rates. I just, uh, did a, uh, recruitment for a city of six thousand in downstate Illinois in a rural, very rural community. Um, and they hired in at one-twenty-seven-five. Got a good experienced manager, but that was a, a community of your size in, in a rural environment. Uh, lower cost of living and, uh, that was where they had to go to attract uh, the kind of talent that they were looking for. So I think it's, it's wishful thinking that you will hire somebody uh, of, of really good quality in, in the one-twenty's. I just don't think it's likely. Uh, one-thirty-five might, you know, again, if you get somebody with a little less experience, maybe a little younger, but looks to have, uh, lots of upside. I think hundred and thirty-five is, is doable. Um, and again, I think you're looking at one-fifty for the really, the, the very experienced, been there, done that administrator who's looking to for a change. So, uh, and again, I'm, I'm offering my professional recommendation and advice. Uh, you don't have to take it. You can say, let's stick with the current range and we'll do what we can with it. I'm just suggesting, I think a little higher bottom end would help us.
Out of curiosity, Mark, this is Michael Libby. Can, can you share that Southern Illinois city with us, uh?
Greenville, Illinois.
Green.
Greenville.
Yeah. Isn't there a federal prison there?
Pardon?
Isn't there a federal prison there?
Did, was that a question? I'm sorry. I didn't hear it.
Yes. Is there a federal prison there?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding the question. I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, um, all right. Well, counsel, um, what are your thoughts on this proposal?
As much as I don't want to do it, I think it's probably the reality of the world that we are in right now with workforce and, um, I, I've experienced it in my own business. I just, it's just the reality of it.
I think it makes sense to me. And so that'll move it from a fifteen thousand dollar range?
That's what I was going to say. That's a very close range.
Well, do you want to do one-thirty? I mean, there's not, you know, that gives you twenty. That's, that's a, that's a pretty decent range for starting, but again, it's up to you, you all.
Mike, you are correct. There's a federal prison.
Yes, there is. You know your prisons, unfortunately. I think one-thirty is a nice range.
Okay.
Starting there.
I'm just reasonable. I, I like that better than one-twenty. Um, there were just some other things. I don't know. Do you provide a vehicle allowance? I know that, that's more for my information. I'm not recommending it, but it's a common benefit for administrators, either a city vehicle or a vehicle allowance. And that again, helps a little bit with recruitment.
We didn't in the last, we didn't in Dennis's contract. But you have him passed.
Okay. And, and there are some of these small items that are, are even negotiable. Once you get a a candidate in, you can, you know, you can leave these, some of these things on the table, but, uh, you know, so there's some cities that provide a technology allowance. Others just say, we'll give you a laptop and a phone. Um, some cities you have to pay for that. You have to pay for your phone and your laptop, which I can see a phone, a laptop. I'm not sure. I think that's a good idea. Um, I'm assuming without going into, you've got a standard vacation leave policy. Uh, I think you're, from what I can gather, your insurance is good. So all of those are positive things. Um, and you did, uh, was, I don't know if that was Rochelle who mentioned, you, you do, uh, offer an employment agreement to the, uh, administrator?
Yes.
And does that include a severance in the event of termination, which is a fairly standard thing?
This one did. Um, Dennis's, and it was six months.
Okay, that's pretty standard these days. Okay. Good. Um.
Sorry, I should clarify that. That was without cause.
Without cause, certainly, certainly with cause. Yeah. With cause, there's typically no severance. Yeah. You commit a crime or you do something, you know, something that. You know, something that justifies termination of that nature. There's typically no severance. Relocation assistance. Is that something you're willing to negotiate some assistance for somebody moving in to the area from? You know, far away. And it's, it's fairly standard in the, in the industry. You give them some money for. Moving expenses and whatnot. That's fairly standard. You don't need to even say what it is. You just say, we're open to discussing that with a successful candidate.
Thank you, open to discussing that.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's all we're talking about here. Um. The, the actual selection process itself, and we're not quite, you know, that's a little, little bit wait, but it might be sooner than expected. I'm assuming the full council will be involved in interviewing candidates and making the selection as opposed to a subset or a. Uh, some cities use a, a special committee to do that. It's a subset of the elected body.
Administrative reports to the capital.
Right, okay. And it would be all of you, which I, I certainly recommend that you all be involved. Um. How do you feel about participation in the screening process by senior staff?
I think. Any sort of hiring process we've done involving a minister in the past has involved department heads and I think that's.
Good. I recommend that. I think it's important that senior staff have an opportunity to provide input. The understanding they're not making the decision and they know that, but I think it's important that they. That you all have benefit of their thoughts. And are there any other stakeholder groups that you would expect to be involved in the actual screening of uh candidates?
We've done it differently and. With my previous. And I think we've had everything from having representatives from like the, the business community and the foundation and those. Um, identified to be a part of that process. Um. And then we've had it where they haven't. So, um, but I think, I think how we did it last time, what worked well where we had. Um, individuals be of those communities be responsible for whether it be a tour or. Um, what have you. So I think there's ways for us to work them in, excuse me, work them in, but not necessarily be in a. Organized interview process. If that makes sense.
Yeah, there's a variety of ways to do that. Uh, and you're absolutely right. Um, it can be done informally or formally. The only thing that I will. Just caution you is if you invite. A specific third party group, maybe it's a business leaders, maybe it's uh, other community leaders from various organizations. To sit down with the candidates and then to provide you with their thoughts. Um, you just have to be prepared. They may like somebody that you don't. And that puts you in a bit of a bind. I've been there, believe me, I know where, where uh. There was a candidate that the council all really liked and they coalesced around and the, the external group said, no way. Terrible. Don't like. Him at all. And they favored somebody who the council did not like. And those things happen. Uh, it can happen with staff as well. So you've just got to be prepared to. Uh, work through that and understand that's, that when you ask people their opinion, they're going to give it to you. Uh, I'm not saying you shouldn't ask, but just understand that those things can happen.
And then they say I told them so.
Yeah. The one thing that Rochelle had mentioned to me that you apparently have done in the past. Or I don't know if you tend to do it now, is some sort of a community forum. A meet and greet, if you will, where people are invited to come in and meet the final candidates. And that is not an uncommon activity. I think a lot of city councils feel that in the interest of openness and transparency. The community should have an opportunity to see the candidates. Um, and I've done that. I, we've been through that process with other uh city councils. Again, I will caution you that uh, two, two issues there. Number one, I've found those activities not to be that helpful to the council. Uh, usually it's the candidate stand up for five or 10 minutes and tell a little bit about themselves. And then they mingle around the room and there's refreshments and they shake hands and chat with people. And supposedly then members of the community can reach out to one of you all and say, well, I like this person or I like that person. Um, and, and that's nice, but it's not really helpful and they don't. They aren't equipped with the substantive information about the candidate and their background and their philosophies that you are. So it's, it's somewhat a, a little bit like window dressing and sometimes window dressing is important. Don't get me wrong. I understand it. But uh, the, the downside to that is it may scare some candidates away. Uh, it is not uncommon that when a candidate is choosing to apply, one of the first questions they ask is, is this a confidential process? And ordinarily, I recommend confidential. We don't publicly disclose the names of the applicants. Until potentially you get to a small number, maybe two or three finalists. Um, and, and but I, but many of these people have, are gainfully employed. And they're not necessarily anxious to publicly disclose to their communities and their own city councils that they're applying for another job. Now, when you reach a point in the process, I usually have that conversation with the candidate, even if we. If the city does not plan to release the names. You know, when you get down to two or three, those things tend to wiggle out. And so I usually will tell the candidate, hey, you're at a point now in the process. You better tell your spouse and you better tell your mayor and your council. Because you don't want them to find out through some other source, uh, certainly not the media. Um, but when you do a community meet and greet, let's say with three or four finalists. Um, I have had uh. Applicants say, you know, I'm not really sure if this is for me. I think I'm just going to withdraw. Cause I don't want to go through that and have my name outed. So it's just something to keep in mind to kind of weigh the, the positive benefits of such an activity with some of the negative consequences. Uh, but again, it's completely your call. This is something you know your community and you know what's important and I will defer to your judgment.
We just, Mark, we just went through this with uh. Our police chief. Selection process. And invited the three finalists to come in.
Yes.
And I thought that was helpful.
Okay. If, if you think it's helpful, um, I think that's. You know, it's fine. We're happy to do that. It's just that there are, there are some negative consequences that I want you to realize. And, and then we'll, whatever you decide, that's what we'll be, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm somewhat. Concerned that someone might not want to participate in the process because it might be not public. The only time in the process would be towards the end. Uh, as far as almost all of our hiring, we hold a public forum because this is, I, I understand from your, your recruitment perspective and a professional perspective. But uh, from our small town perspective.
Yes.
Uh, for residents to, to have access to these people because uh, obviously. One ongoing issue, uh, not so much since Rochelle. But one ongoing issue is customer service from our city administrator. So it'd be very important. Be accessible to the public. So I think that a forum is very important.
I hear you.
It's not, uh, to be clear, this, the, the, it's not like they're standing up there pitching themselves. It's just a meet. You know, that's, that's what we're talking about. Very relaxed. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been through those and they, they typically are, maybe they say a few words and then they just shake hands and talk to people and. You know, it's uh, usually it's, it's a nice bar. And, and it's a fair point. If. If a candidate is just not interested in participating in that kind of public event, then maybe they're not the right candidate. I mean, that's. That's a, a fair, a fair consideration. How do you feel about using Zoom for preliminary interviews? Let's, let's just say, for example, uh, a week from now. Uh, I reach out and said, hey, I've got a, I've got what I think is a really good candidate. Um, and I'd like to arrange something fairly quickly. So they have some exposure to all of you. Um, can we put together a thirty minute Zoom interview? It's just efficient and, and convenient for everybody. To give you an opportunity to take a look at this candidate and see if you agree with me that yes, we, we like him or her. And then of course, that does not preclude them from being invited. To the community for a much more rigorous uh, extended interview process. Um, but we can usually pull that together quickly and it gives you a little taste of the, of the candidate through a Zoom interview. How do you feel about that?
I think it's a good idea.
I think that's probably preferable.
Okay, great. We'll, we'll kind of plan on that then. I do want to say something about back to confidentiality. I do think it is important. That we respect the confidential nature of the applicants until they reach a, a kind of an end stage in the process. So while we're going through the process, I, I would encourage you all to keep the identities of candidates to yourself. Uh, avoid the temptation to call a. A council member or a mayor in a, in a community where they're currently at to say, hey, what's the story? Now all of a sudden the candidate is outed. Um, again, that, there, there may come a point in the process where you can do that. But let's wait till we get to a little bit later stage. Um, my, my job in part is to make sure there are no surprises. We do a lot of background investigation on the candidates. Once we do kind of our initial selection, we do our own. You know, just a, a Google search. Uh, we have a team. Uh, on staff, in fact, there are several team members on this team. There's a. There's a reference specialist, somebody who does that. Their job is just checking references. We have a background specialist. Their job is to do background investigations. And we have graphic artists and so forth, but. Um, once we reach a final stage, let's say we got it down to three or four candidates. At that point, we actually hire a third party. Company that specializes in background investigations. To do a deep dive into the background because my goal is there should be no surprises. Once you are prepared to make a decision. I want you to know the good and the bad and the ugly about each candidate. So you make an informed choice. The last thing we want. Is, is for you to select and announce a new city administrator and get a call from a newspaper reporter and said, hey, did you know what? Uh, they're under investigation down in uh, Missouri for some illegal act. Um, so we will do that due diligence now. I know when, when we reach a final stage, it may be that you will want to talk to some of your counterparts. In other communities and that's fine. I would just wait till we're at that stage. Where at that point, the, the applicants are told you better inform your principals at your city. And let them know that you're a finalist. Uh, so I, I just. I would ask you to, to, to keep the names as quiet as possible until we get to that later stage in the process. Questions on that? I did send out, I don't know if Rochelle distributed what called a draft position announcement, and this is the, the, the job ad. This is the posting. And it's just a, a text posting. And this would go into a, for a variety of publications and sites. Have you, is, have you gotten that? You have that in front of you? Folks?
They don't have it in front of them maybe, but I did email it this morning along with the. So the advertising venues.
Okay, I sent that along with a, with a list of advertising sources that we're recommending. I would ask that you take a look at that fairly quickly. And this is just kind of a, a, an overview of the community, the organization, the position. We'll get into much more specific. Uh, details in the recruitment brochure and that'll be more of a flashy marketing piece. But this is just the job posting uh, that we can get out there and begin to uh. Advertise the position and, and hopefully attract applicants. It would be helpful if you could all take a look at that fairly quickly and give me any thoughts or concerns or suggested changes. I will note, I will change the salary range in, in. In accordance with what we discussed this evening. Uh, but uh, if there's anything else you see in there that you'd like me to adjust or. Or clarify, or if there's any mistakes. Please flag those. You can either go through Rochelle or you can contact me directly. I think at the bottom of my uh, of the uh. Of, of this document on discussion items is my e, my cell phone and my email. And feel free to, you can call me or you can email me either way. And uh, the same would go for the advertising venues, the advertising sources. I've tried to pare that down a little bit just to control the cost. But we also want to make sure that we, you know, we. Distribute this position announcement far and wide so we don't miss any good applicants. You will notice we also reach out to. Uh, we have a, we have a strategic alliance with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, which is an excellent. Um, organization to help uh, cultivate a diverse applicant pool. And uh, we also have the uh. Uh, League of Women uh, in Government Newsletter and the Local Government Hispanic Network, again, trying to. Um, make sure that we uh, access diverse populations with our position announcement. And then the, the recruitment brochure will come a little bit later. And we will post that on various websites, including yours at Windsor Heights. And then uh, we will. Uh, send that out directly to probably four or five hundred potential applicants that we glean from our database. Is a, is another effort to try to. Try to reel in some good applicants for the position. Any questions on either of those? Again, if you could get back to me within the next day or two, that would be really helpful. So we can get this posted. I have had, uh, Rochelle has kind of been my contact to date. Uh, I'm happy to continue to go through her or mayor. If you'd rather me contact you directly on. Some of these questions, a lot of them are background issues. Uh, obviously if there's something that has to do with policy. Or uh, a substantive process question, I would pose that uh, mayor to you and then you could. Share that with the council. I'm also happy to come in person to Windsor Heights anytime. You'd like to see me and, and I will be there when we're interviewing. Um, and I will uh, be there when, when you're deliberating the final uh, candidates and to help. In that regard, and I'm also available to assist. You in negotiating final terms with the selected candidate when it gets to that point. And uh, I will, I will be on site as much as you need me.
This is all great, Mark, I think. So thanks for walking us through all of this and um, I think it puts us well on our way to get. The process moving forward. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
There was a question about who to contact.
Well, you, you have my contact information. If ever you have questions, uh. Uh, let me know and I will endeavor to keep you all up to date periodically send out just an update. Here's what's going on. Here's where we're at. Uh, here's, uh, you know, we've got some good applicants or not. If things are not going well, I'll tell you, we're not doing as well as I'd hoped. In terms of quality or quantity. Uh, we'll, we'll keep you so there again, so you're not surprised uh, in, in, in two or three weeks when we start trying to wrap this process up.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and, and uh, again, we'll be, uh, we'll be talking to you frequently, I'm sure.
That all good?
Go find some candidates.
Okay. Um, item seven, reports. Mine is approaching three pages. I will try to uh get this first down a bit. Uh, March 23rd, MPO Matt, uh, on other things, go day two, approve the priority project list for the partnerships at the CDC. Uh, that list of instruction projects discussed professional or on that list is the 733 construction project. Um, thank you to counselors Campbell Jones. Uh, Rochelle, Erin Scaries taking time to sit down and interview police chief candidates on the first, first. Thank you to all the counselors they were able to attend. House, fire department, police department. Um, members of the community and the chief Scott McDaniel, Fusco and Obersen for taking part in their own interview process today at the hiring station. Um, attended Derek Meyer's retirement ceremony April 4th at CDC, uh wonderful ceremony. As I said, then Derek was a rock for the department and basically served our community for over 20 years dedication and knowledge. Uh, without people and we already missed him. Thank you to staff for making it possible. Thank you to the firefighter association and department for putting together for Easter egg hunt for the community. Um, attended part of the MAC meeting on April 11th. That's typically during this time, it's basically what the state company. Uh, thank you to counselor John Scaries and Rochelle for adjusting the schedule to do the fire season interviews on April 12th. I was in trial all of last week, so I was unable to attend. Um, thank you to chiefs, he's, is it Hope Ref? Oh, right. Oh, right. Robinson, Lou and Doyle for conducting their own interview process. I said I would make an appointment. Uh, to planning and zoning by this meeting, but the aforementioned trial derailed most of my work capacity last week. Uh, I received a good question about pickup, uh junk day or waste pickup day. For 683, what's to happen there considering uh. Construction on the street may impact the ability to reach those sites. So Rochelle is going to be a contestant. They simply. Uh, figured that out. I've been speaking with the full county auditor. And legal about changing our election laws. Uh, this has been discussed a number of times over the past decade. Uh, but something struck me when we were interviewing a city administrator candidate, we had mentioned. That obviously great turnover in elected positions can have a detrimental influence on city administration. And so we have a unusual election process where elections are very imbalanced. Four positions are up at any given time. Uh, well, four positions are up in every, every so often. So the conversation I've been having with Mr. Fitzgerald uh and Matt Brick is that um. It will need to happen by an election. And to even get it on the ballot, it will be approximately 10 percent. We will need 10%. Of the eligible electors who voted in the last city council election. If we go by last years or last election, that would be approximately 100 people. It would then have to go to an election and you cannot actually extend the terms. You can only shorten them. And so uh the proposed position, I would propose the mayor's term be two years. Then after the next election, it then returned to. Hopefully that's not confusing. Um, there's more, but I will stop there. Sorry.
Yes, uh, just real quickly. So um as you said, Matt, uh, Matt, last week, in addition to um legislative updates. Which, oh, it's in session, it's in session right now, the Senate is meeting and uh, I'll talk today, but I do think that they're. Uh, I'm gonna say that I'm not bouncing wood, I'm not crossing fingers. Great thoughts that uh they, they worked towards a German to um here in the Thursday night on April 28th. But I do, I get the sense that that's what, that, that they're starting to make progress. Um, Senate issued a new property tax bill yesterday. The House passed one last week. Um, and so it will impact um. Um, presidential property tax, um, um, rate increases. So uh more to come on that, of course. Um, I don't think it's gonna have a significant impact on outside. That's just my first thought on it, but. Anyways, um, we'll wait to see what happens before anybody gets excited, but they also um talked about uh very wide partnership, federal priorities, of course. Um, and provided those in mind that everybody gets signed up with partnership trip um. Few short weeks away. So um, and then I think it's tomorrow, Wednesday. Wednesday they're having uh who trucks up on the Capitol and so for whichever day it is. Come do that. Communications committee did not meet. Um, hopefully to maybe get that done next weekend. Um, but I did send a mail um to several of you to give me updates um from the business newsletter. So if you could get that information to me from. The um respective committee and work function that you have, um, I will. I will get it written up if you could, but I don't have the information. So I can't write it up, but I have the information. So can you get it sent over to me? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just wanted to echo your gratitude to the fire association spouses and other volunteers for making the Easter egg hunt a huge success. And a special shout out to the Easter bunny. It's all over. And uh then a reminder for the birthday event, it's happening this afternoon.
Just a, a point of personal information. I'll be out of pocket starting on Friday. So uh out of, out of state. Some travel. Also, uh, held a um, cotton council last Saturday. Speak with several individuals. Always, it's enlightening. Enjoy it.
Uh, very quickly, we got our results back from um a dark customer service um. Survey and we have 22% in most satisfaction. Our most transits across the country are about 58%. So. It was pretty good to be 24 points above the average. Uh, we had a public hearing on budget, uh, passed that today. Uh, we had a couple of all starts earlier in the spring. Uh, and so our new tax authority can be 1.99. It's a little bit of a small, I'm sure we'll be there soon too. Karen?
Um, I've been busy planning birthday events. So Saturday from nine to 12 is the stream cleanup. And then from 12 to three, we have um great events inside the, the community event center. Volunteers, we've got volunteers signed up from Mid-American, local boy scouts, local girl scouts. Who voted to donate some of their girl scout cookies to any of the volunteers that cleaned up. We're doing enough. So I thought that was really nice of the girl scouts to vote for that. Um, then some local residents also have signed up for the stream cleanup. And then for the events inside the, the community event center. We've got lots of fun activities planned, including 66 people that have signed up for the birdhouse meeting and that really just blows my mind. I had. No idea that, that many people would sign up.
Chickens, birdhouses.
Well, yeah. Next year we'll do chicken. Did we go?
Yeah.
Yeah, who is baby chicks? Um, I have a metro waste meeting on Wednesday. On Friday, we have a special events committee meeting. Um, again, I'll echo everybody's comments about the firefighters association's Easter egg hunt. Uh, we counted unofficially about 300 people. So uh, that was great. We even had a bunny rabbit have a picture taken with the Easter bunny, which I thought was kind of funny. Um, Wednesday, we had a public works committee, committee meeting and we met to decide what decorations we will purchase for University Avenue. That I'm assuming will come to council probably next council meeting. And uh, that was a lot of fun to look through all those. Um, on Saturday, I spent all day at the League of Cities Emergency Management Symposium. That was a very long day. Um, I have a book from Homeland Security and Emergency Management that they handed out if anybody wants to read it. Uh, as they said, it will put you to sleep and very entertaining. Um, I brought home a lot of takeaways from this event and. I know that staff will love to hear this, but I have some questions that I will be asking for the next meeting in May. Um, hopefully we have all the answers and it will be just quick email responses. And then reminder that we start with movies in the park on May 5th. Um, can't remember what movie we're dealing with. They're going, okay. Thank you to everybody else. My mind is on Earth Day. So that's where I'll say, that's what I'll say. Uh, we're still looking for sponsors for all of our special events. So reach out to your business friends. And see what, if they would like to be a cool business and sponsor a movie or popcorn or even cookies.
Uh, Rochelle, I think you were saying.
Uh, yeah, public safety parking lot. Uh, the new start date is May 2nd. Uh, and that's a Tuesday. So May 1 is our council meeting. It will be here. Uh, we had him start May 2nd, so we could have our council meeting here. And then the council meeting on 515, um, to be determined, probably community center. Um, but that's when we'll start. And then um. Uh, let's see, um, meeting on the 24th of uh April with Zach Nunn's office um to discuss funding options. Um, also Madison Burke from Goldman Make will be there. She's the grant writer. She'll be there as well. So we have a lot of irons in the fire. So hopefully we, we could get some sort of other funding and, and we'll be able to talk to him about the raise grant. Hopefully get their support. So there's that.
Okay, thank you. Item A, closed session. The city council will convene into closed session. Pursuant to Iowa code 21, five sub I to the violation of professional competency of an individual who appointment, hiring, performance or discharge to be considered. When necessary, to prevent needless and durable injury to that individual presentation and that individual will request a closed session.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yeah.
Please, consideration of resolution number 2023 15, a resolution approving the merit of 21 up to 25. Second, uh, procedurally Rochelle. Does any, there's any record we made on these proposed changes in the contract?
I'm, I wrote the resol, I mirrored the resolution after Chad's. So it basically authorizes you to sign the contract as exhibit A. Which I believe is what we were instructed by commission to do as well.
Do you need to make a motion to change the contract? That's.
Right. So the, that's correct. So the, the motion should um approve the proposed contract with the revisions discussed in closed session. And then we'll go ahead and make those revisions and circulate it back to Rochelle.
Oh, uh, Theresa, did you make the motion?
Yeah, with the revisions, yes.
All right, whoever seconded it.
Want to use two?
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Hartsch.
I don't know, juror.
Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Hartsch.
Thanks.